Gentlemen, it's seven o'clock and we will call this meeting to order. Would you please stand with us for the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And now we'll, whoa, we'll have roll call. Kristi?
We have a quorum with seven councilors present.
Thank you. Next up is agenda approval. Do we have any changes or modifications to the agenda, Kristi? No?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as is.
Second. I have a motion and second. Kristi?
We're missing one vote.
Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. Next up is citizen comment. We have a card here from Mr. Dan McCann. Mr. McCann?
Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. I'm wearing an NYPD cap, not just because I'm a law and order guy, but I'm involved in the financial markets and CNBC is always interviewing people out of New York. But right now, something special is going on. The New York Rangers have been playing great hockey. New York's had to deal with the problems of the Yankees. The Knicks haven't delivered, and it looks like the Rangers have got a shot to really turn that town around. And if happens what may happen, I would not be one of the guys working for NYPD because that town will just go nuts and they will earn their keep. Anyway, those of you who have never been to New York want to go there. And here's what I suggest you do. There's a company, it's called Circle Lines, they're probably still in business. And what it does, it travels through all the areas around the boroughs, on the water, and they give the history of New York. And then after you get that done, when you go all over New York, you'll really have a feeling for what the town's about, and they talk about the history and everything. It's really neat. It's Circle Lines, it doesn't cost a lot of money. And then when you do that, they go to all five boroughs, they talk about the bridges. I went to the top of the Empire State Building, and you know, and you're looking out and you know what you're looking at. New York's a special place, nowhere like in the world. Anyway, good work Rangers.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Next up on the list is consent calendar A, which includes approving the bid for the sunset drainage, approve the minutes of the regular meeting, May 21st, 2014, and appoint our advisory board members. Council, do we have any questions or comments?
Mayor, I had a question on 1C, and I know Pat's not here, but, and I didn't want to pull it and bring it down, just a couple of comments on it. This is, it seems like a three-part project according to the background on this. So a three-phase deal over by the middle school? Is that correct, Heather?
The way I'm reading it, it's a three to four-year project. I'm trying to find where if we have a certain number of phases, because I know this is just one phase of it. I'm looking in the body.
You know, I was trying to remember when we discussed this. I don't know, you know, I can't remember when we discussed this, but apparently we did see it, since we look at it as being a phased-out project. And maybe that's something that we'll, when Pat gets back.
Counsel Gregor, you want to table this, or?
No, 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 let it go. I'm just wondering when we discuss a phased part of a project like this.
What I can do is, I know from reading the material, it was clearly in the budget and as a CIP item, so at some point it would have had to been discussed, I'm not sure of what format.
Sure.
And I'm not seeing quickly how many exact phases there are. So what we can do is maybe at the next meeting or when Pat returns, do a quick overview of what the project is and how many phases it has.
And now that we're on this and talking about Pat, is Pat doing okay?
We got, we received word that he's doing well, but once they started the surgery, it was worse than they anticipated. So he actually may be out for longer than expected. So we will probably be putting something together to send him a basket or something. So Michaela will probably be sending an email out.
Thank you, Charlie. I also had a question specific to this issue, and that was, down at the bottom it says, Gardner Excavation, 171,468.75. Now, is that for the entire three-year project, or is that, because we're only awarding 88,708.61, correct?
That is what I would assume.
So that, not, where does, okay, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is where this $20,736 comes in, because that's way over, or was it 60-some and then it went up to 88,000? Can you tell us anything about that?
Well, I think we have a separate contract for the 20,736 for trench preparation and asphalt patching. The bid for this phase, apparently after they negotiated and changed the scope of work to bring it down to 88,708. So what the 171 may be is after, is before they did the negotiated scope change. Or it could be, I would have to check with Mr. Steenberg.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to get an answer to that, but council feels comfortable with that, we can. Are there any other questions or comments?
If there are no further questions, I'll make the motion that we approve consent calendar A.
I second.
Have a motion and a second, council. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. Next up, we'll move to regular business, and we have a presentation from outside agencies. Mr. Randy Wright is here to tell us about the barbecue competition. Thank you for being here, Mr. Wright.
Thank you all very much. Again, thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me here tonight. I don't have much voice, so hopefully you'll be able to hear me tonight. I guess, I think I gave you my copy, but that's all right, I don't think I need it. This is a copy of last year's budget for the barbecue contest. Believe it or not, it's summertime in Alamosa. Thank you, Charlie. And with summer comes barbecue, and with barbecue comes the competition to Alamosa now. Obviously, you remember last year, we started the competition. In our first year, we had a great competition, I think it was a big hit. We had some challenges and some little roadblocks and things that happened along the way, but we've learned from those, and we're going to make it even bigger and better than it was last year. The first thing that we had a challenge with last year, if you remember, our date has changed, we had it the first weekend or just after Early Iron last year in September. And there was another competition, actually two competitions, the same weekend in Kansas that we were competing against. And rather than try and fight them, which we felt like we probably had a pretty good chance of doing with our venue here, thanks to Cole Park, we felt like they were established competitions, we'd let them have that weekend, and we found another weekend that worked better for everybody. And so this year will be August 1st and 2nd. Moved it up a little bit, and have had great response from the cookers and from the judges as far as the date change and obviously as far as the word that got around last year after the competition. Last year, if you remember, we had a few challenges coming up with judges. This year, as of the first of the year, we had 49 judges already registered, and there's been more since then. We've got way more than we need, but that shows really quickly what kind of word got out there about Alamosa. We've had similar responses with the cookers, although it's just now time for them to start registering. We only have, oh, maybe eight or 10 of them actually registered right now, but we've got some really big names, and I wish I could announce them tonight because Ruth would probably want to put it in the paper. And when we get the registration from some of these guys, we'll let you know who they are and announce it, at least put it on Facebook and things like that. But if you watch barbecue on TV, you're probably going to see a face or two here, so at least that's what we've been told. So we're really excited, like I said, making it bigger and better. But with making it bigger and better comes a few more challenges. Number one, we had to have more help. And I've been kind of pulling my hair out over the last couple of months trying to figure out how we were going to come up with this help. And we'd had a few people last year after the competition that had volunteered, and they've stepped up and come in and helped us a lot. But Jeff Woodward and I got together a few weeks ago, he knew what I was going through over at the CVB, and he said, you know what, I can help. It's a little bit of a challenge because he's one of the cookers, and we have to be careful of the conflict of interest. But the way we've handled that is, he's going to help us right up to the day of the event, and then he's going to be a cooker, and he's no longer on the committee. So I think we're going to be fine with that. Everything is judged double-blind, so nobody really knows what's going on there anyway. And we won't be judging it, it'll be outside judges, so I think we're covered there, we're okay. But he's provided a lot of help, a lot of expertise, since he's been to some of these competitions around the country. He's a judge, he's a certified judge, so he knows a lot about that. So he's really given me a lot of help. Part of the discussion that we had, though, was coming up with the manpower. And so what we've decided to do is model this event after some of the bigger events that we have in the San Luis Valley. For instance, Early Iron or Sky High Stampede. And what they do with those events is they call in different groups of people. For instance, you know, some of the organizations around town that might take a part of the event and run with it. You know, Stampede has their rotary and Kiwanis, and everybody takes a certain piece of the event, and they run with that part of the event, and that's their fundraiser for the year. And it works out extremely well, and we're going to try and do some similar things like that in this event. Early Iron, for instance, is going to run a chili cook-off as part of our competition this year. And there's going to be a few other things that we're talking to other organizations about and trying to get some things done. Looks like we've got a sponsor for a kids' queue, we're really excited about that. That seems to be one of the most fun events in a barbecue competition around the country right now, is letting the kids do their own barbecuing, and they actually get to turn in in those little styrofoam boxes, and the KCBS judges judge them as well, so they get to feel like part of the big guys. And we're really excited about that, and we've got some great ideas in how to make that happen. And I think that kind of goes throughout the competition, is that we're just getting certain groups to go out there and help us do part of the event. The Chamber of Commerce is still going to do the cook itself. We're going to handle all the cooks, and we're going to handle all the judges. We'll take care of organizing and laying out the park and all those kinds of things, putting everything where it goes and so on. We'll still have entertainment, we're going to put the stage out there and bring some bands in. And Hines, Hines not here tonight, but Hines is sitting on the committee with us now. We actually talked with Heather about this. When CVB decided that they wanted to partner with us, we knew that the city was such a big part of this competition as well, that you guys should be a partner as well. And so Hines right now is sitting on that committee and is helping us out, which is really nice, because he's right there at the table when we're trying to make decisions, he's got the answers for us, and it's been a big help for us there. And you know, there's others as well that have stepped up and really come to the plate with us and helped us start putting this together. And we've only just begun, we've got a long ways to go. The other challenge with making it bigger and better, though, is that we're going to have to have more money in order to make it bigger and better. And I think you've kind of got an idea, looking at our budget, if you look at the bottom line, you see that it was almost a $40,000 event. And I think there's a couple of little things there that may not quite be right. I think we actually probably broke even or maybe even made $1,000 on the event, but that's a pretty close picture of what we did there. But if we're going to make it bigger and better this year, we're going to need more money. So some of the things that we're doing are in the process of solving one of our problems last year, which I'm sure many of you probably heard, and maybe you were there and had the same challenge. How many times did you hear, "We go to a barbecue competition and we can't even eat? We want to eat barbecue." Well, when I went to the Rocky Mountain Barbecue Association banquet in Denver, I found out that this isn't something that Alamosa is the only one that has a challenge with, this is a nationwide challenge. People have barbecue challenges or competitions all over the country, and nobody can eat. Well, there's a few people that have solved that by adding a People's Choice award. And what they do is, they give the cookers who would like to compete in the People's Choice a couple of pork butts or something like that that they can cook. They can cook some things like, you know, maybe a brisket or something on the side if they want to add that to the pot themselves, they're welcome to. And they can serve those things in little two-ounce or less cups, and we let the public try those samples. And what we'll do is, we'll sell them, we'll sell the public a ticket for $2, and they get to go try that sample. And in the meantime, the way we're going to judge this is, we'll sell five tickets with, we're working on trying to get some tokens now and some ballot boxes. And the way we'll do it is, they'll take their five tokens, or five tickets around and try five different samples of barbecue, and if they want more, we'll sell them to them for $2 apiece, so they can try everybody, hopefully. And then they'll take their token to the tent that they like best and put it in their ballot box, and that's how they'll vote. We do that for that $2 ticket, we split that with the cookers. So it's a huge hit for not only us, for the people that attend, but also the cookers, because even if they don't win, they've got a chance of taking some money home with them. And most of the cookers who competed in the People's Choice last year, at least took their entry money back with them. So they were pretty excited, or at least a good portion of their entry money back with them. So they were pretty excited. What we're going to do different this year, though, is that we started the People's Choice at 1:00, and that's after everybody was done wanting to eat. And it really didn't work very well, and we didn't sell nearly as many People's Choice tickets as I think we can. So this year, we're going to start at 11:00, and we're going to try and put somebody in everybody's tent that wants to be a participant in this event, so that the cookers themselves can still be working on their turn-ins for the actual competition, they don't have to be bothered with the People's Choice. We can have somebody there serving their food for them. And that solves a lot of problems all at once. Hopefully, we'll be able to make a little bit more money, we can take care of the people that come to the event and feeding them some barbecue, and everybody will be a lot happier. We also only had one vendor last year, a barbecue vendor last year. Now, that wasn't our fault, we actually had two that were scheduled, and one of them didn't show up. But that one vendor was overwhelmed and honestly wasn't able to handle everybody that was trying to eat barbecue that day. We're going to have two this year, and Jeff and Kyle at Woody's Q Shack are going to be one of those. I specifically asked that they be allowed to do that, and Arlie, our promoter, consented to letting Jeff and Kyle do that. He's been around enough competitions, he knows the quality of the work that they do now, and he consented to letting them do that, and I think everybody in Alamosa is going to be happy about that. So we're excited about that part of it. So we've got a few ways that we can possibly make a little bit more money, but that means that we still have to at least come up with what we did last year in order to make this thing work. So that brings me to the point of why I actually came to you tonight, with my hand out on my knees. Last year, if you remember, you gave the barbecue competition $5,000. If there is any way possible, we would definitely like to have you do the same this year. We've gone to the marketing board, we asked the same thing of the marketing board this year. They gave us $5,000 last year, they actually stepped it up and gave us $6,000 this year. One of the benefits of co-partnering with the marketing board this year is that by having them on board, when we need a few extra dollars, they have stepped up, and Jamie is working some ways of helping us pay for, possibly paying for the ballot boxes and tokens that we might need for the People's Choice as well. So they've really stepped up big and helped us a lot, and we really appreciate that, and I did want to say that publicly, too. But I'm still needing a little bit more. I talked with Heather very briefly before the meeting, and I think we've got a couple of challenges with some things that we've worked on with past sponsors, and so we're definitely going to need everything that we had last year in order to make this work. And then we're going to have to go out and try and get some new sponsors as well, and we're working on that. So I guess what I'm asking for is, if you can possibly arrange it, we would sure like to have $5,000 from you. Any questions?
Counsel, you have any questions? Charlie?
I did, I guess I'll start. Is this, Randy, is this one of these deals where eventually it'll take care itself?
Charlie, that's exactly what I have in mind, and I talked that over with Jamie in a pretty good detail yesterday. And I told her that my first, she asked me what my goals were for the competition. I told her my first goal for the competition is to get to where we don't have to ask for money anymore. It's going to take a while to do that, because we have to be able to put enough people in the park that we can justify things like maybe even a concert that's paid, and we can actually realize some good income from that. That's where a lot of the competitions get their money, is from the big concerts and so on that they hold. There's a couple of other ways, a lot of them, for instance, I think Frisco is a Jack Daniels-sponsored event. So when you get a big, major national sponsor like that, you start getting the money in as well. It's going to be a while before we're at that level, but that's my first goal, is to get to a level where I don't have to come back and ask you guys and the marketing board for money. The second, the second goal that I have is to increase the prize money, because as we increase the prize money for the cookers, we're going to get more and higher quality cookers to our event as well. Although Cole Park has done an amazing job of helping us with that without the money. And the third goal that I have is to provide enough money in this event to put those good names on the stage, somebody decent every year, that everybody would recognize the name, and it would be an actual draw for the concert, somebody that we could charge to come in for. After that, it would be a point where we're actually making money for the community. Again, like I said, I'd like for each individual organization that's part of this to be able to use this as a fundraiser for themselves for the year, too, which is very important. As we all know, all of us seem to have to come to you guys and to other people for sponsorship money and so on. It'd be really nice if we had some ways of raising some of that money on our own. So that's part of what we're doing as well.
Also, Randy, I was looking at this list of expenses, and on some of this stuff, maybe you can get it donated or stuff, you know?
Charlie, I don't know, a lot of this is kind of, it should say a little bit more clearly, but a lot of this is in-kind. This includes everything. It includes not only the financial donations, but also the in-kind donations. For instance, on the money-in side over here, you know, you'll see things like Mondragon's provided us half of the, or a good portion of the porta-potties that was in-kind. A lot of these money-in lines are in-kind donations. City's in-kind donations of $1,300 last year. Basically, what I did there was I got with the city staff last year and asked, of all the things that they provided us yet last year, what would those things be worth if I would have had to buy them? And that's the numbers that they gave me for those. And I think I've told you in past meetings how thankful I am that everything that we asked last year for the barbecue competition from the city was done even better than we could have asked, and very quickly. I appreciate very much the city staff and everything they did for us last year.
Thank you, Randy. Ty?
Randy, I want to thank you very much for your presentation, you did a very good job, thank you for that. I have a question for you. If we do decide to sponsor the $5,000, do you foresee having to use the entire $5,000?
Probably and then some, Ty, unfortunately, yeah. I think at this point in time, we're definitely short, and we're going to have to come up with a significant amount more sponsorship money in order to make it work.
Okay, and my second part of the question is, if for some reason this event this year is successful, do you have a way of establishing a reserve account for next year so much money won't be required the next time?
Yes, we do. We're actually in the process right now, starting a checking account for the barbecue competition so that we can keep the reserves separate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ty. Greg?
Yes, Randy, I think this is a great event, I'm glad to see it returning this year. And I'm glad to see that you're setting it up for a little more public participation, I think that will help a lot, so I appreciate your efforts and thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I know that was probably our biggest complaints last year was, and I think I told you last year that our goal last year was to take care of the cookers and the judges, because we knew if they came back, that the people would come back. And I think we did a great job of taking care of the cookers and the judges last year. I told Rusty at the marketing board meeting the other night, I went to the Rocky Mountain Barbecue Association banquet, and at that banquet, I was told by three of the board members that if we'd have taken a little bit better care of our judges, we would have been the best event of the year last year. And that's all of the events, a 10-year event in Wyoming actually won it. So they were very thrilled with the event, as far as the cookers and judges were concerned. We need to do a little bit of work to take care of the people that come to the event.
Thank you, Randy. The $5,000 that you're requesting is something council's going to either decide on tonight or talk about, but anyway, the city also provides in-kind.
Yes.
And that's an added $1,300.
Absolutely, yes, it is. That's kind of a rough estimate of what it amounted to last year, Joseph, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I think this is something we need to look at, and maybe look and talk a little bit about it, and then lobby come back later and with some kind of response. I personally feel that way, I don't know how the rest council feels.
Thank you, Charlie. Anybody else have any comments?
What kind of timeline do we have, Randy? When are you needing to know?
That's probably a really good question, Ty. I don't know that there's a real hurry on it, I don't think we need to know tonight. It would be really nice to know as soon as possible, obviously that sets us up as far as the rest of the budget. Jamie is actually chairing the committee, and she's putting the budget together basically as we speak right now, so the sooner we know what we've got. Basically, a lot of the things that it hinges on is things like entertainment. Do we have money to be able to get bands here, or do we have to try and find bands that will play for nothing, those kinds of things. There's places that we can skimp, and there's places that we need extra money for, so those are the things that we really need to know. And obviously, the sooner we can get on that, the better we'll have a chance of making it a good event, so. Anything else that you need of me?
Thank you. Thank you, Ty.
One more thing I just wanted, is there going to be an admission charge to the people who are just going who may not want to buy tokens?
You know, Ty, that's one of the things that city staff and I actually hashed out for about an hour and a half. We would love to be able to do that, and a lot of events do, even if it's a small amount, you know, a dollar or two, something like that. But the only way we can do that is if we can fence off the park. And we haven't figured out a way to fence off the park very efficiently and aesthetically, I think is the best way to put that. And so then, the next thing that we started looking at doing was fencing off the barbecue cookers. And again, the aesthetics came into effect, and we were a little bit concerned that people might think it was another event outside of what was going on in the park, there were some challenges there. And it really wasn't easy to do with the power restrictions that we have, trying to get all the cookers' power. So we're not going to charge admission, even though we'd like to, and maybe it's something we'd like to try and figure out in the future, but we don't really have an answer for that.
Thank you, Ty. Rusty?
Heather, is this something that we've already put in the budget, or do we have the funds available for this?
We have a sponsorship line item in the non-departmental area. We had, we have about $3,500 left in there. I did let the mayor know, however, that if council wanted to do the full $5,000, there's going to potentially be some other savings also in non-departmental that we could pull the additional $1,500 from, or a range anywhere within there.
To get this moving forward, would a motion be in order, or would we be looking for a consensus? What do you look?
I guess one of the questions I had of legal, is this a contract for services essentially? Is that something that we have to sign, or just a motion would be fine? Eric?
You know, I'm trying to remember how we did it last year, and I can't recall whether we did a contract for services or whether we just did the sponsorship.
For the sponsorship, okay.
I think that it was just the sponsorship, and either way, you would want a motion to approve the sponsorship or not. And just in terms of timing, with respect to Ty's question, bear in mind that your next meeting is not until July 2nd.
Thank you, Eric. Counsel?
What we have done, just to make 100%, what we have done for the other sponsorships is we receive an invoice, so we have documentation from an auditing perspective, and then we do pay it, we have not done a contract.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Rusty, before you make your motion, I wanted another comment, but go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on, when you start charging people to go into the park, I think that will turn this thing upside down. You know, I can see if you charge, if they're going to taste, they're going to get something for it, okay? But when you start charging- But when you start charging, that happened with the Sunshine Festival years back, when people, they weren't charging, they were asking for donation, and boy, that put a lot of bad taste in people's mouths. So I would caution you to, before you go to that, exert every other energy to make money somewhere else, because when you start doing that, I think you're gonna have, you might have your barbecuers out there by themselves, you know? And this is something that we want the community to come and enjoy, you know, it's another event that we want to bring into the community, to maybe want to get as big as the early iron and that, so I would caution you on if you want to charge people to go in there.
That's, that's a point very well made, Charlie, I appreciate that. I think one of the things that we had thought about doing, rather than just charging admission, is if we had it fenced off and we had just a few gates, we could have somebody sitting at those gates that could be selling the People's Choice tickets there, and so not everybody would have to pay. We would also probably give everybody else a ticket that came in, just so that we could keep track of numbers, because that's one of the things we'd like to know. We know that we had over 1,000 people there last year, but we don't have any real idea how many there was over that, so.
Thank you, Charlie. Rusty?
Well, I agree with Charlie, I think when we start charging people to go into our parks, but I think that's one of the reasons why the city needs to support this, if we're not gonna, if you're not gonna raise that money. And if you, I think the, the feeling of council is for these type of events, and this is my opinion, but that's what it feels like, we're looking for them to be self-sufficient a few years out, keep that in mind as we move forward. But with that, I do, I'm gonna make a motion, the council support the barbecue in the amount of $5,000 for this year.
Thank you, Rusty.
I have a question. Randy, good presentation. Where do the judges come from?
The judges are all sanctioned judges, they're KCBS taught judges, so they come from all over the state. That's a really good part of this, Michael, because that means there's 25 to 30 judges that are spending the night in hotels here in Alamosa, and that's just the judges, that's not the other participants that come from all over the state and around New Mexico and so on to, to participate in the event.
Thank you.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion, further discussion?
I got a comment.
Charlie?
From Mike. Where, where are you taking these monies from?
I think that was explained earlier.
It's the non-departmental budget, we have a line item for sponsorships.
But this, you only have $3,500?
And in talking to Amanda in preparation for this, we anticipate some other savings in the other line items within non-departmental budget still.
As part of the discussion, I wanted to get in on that as well, and we participated, we went and run and visited with quite a few of the cookers, and it is true that one of the big drawbacks is that people don't, they go there because they want to taste the food, they want to sample it, they're willing to buy it, and maybe after the competition it could be sold, I don't know, but I think it's important for people to be able to taste the wares of the folks that come so far for this competition, just, just my view.
I couldn't agree more, absolutely, Mayor.
Thank you.
We had that same challenge, and I agree, we had to try and find some way of conquering that. And we're not gonna have, all of the cookers aren't gonna participate in the People's Choice. Some of those guys are strictly coming here for the competition, they don't care about anything else. That's fine, but the others are gonna serve you.
Thank you, Randy.
And I just want to add one comment to it, too. I like the fact that you're going to start trying to keep track of the amount of people that are coming in, so we can see if this event is successful or not. I think that's very important for council to know as we move forward, when we continue to try to spend money to help events that come into the community, so I'm looking forward to hearing the successful numbers that you're gonna have.
I wish there was a really easy way of doing that, and city staff and I really did everything we could to come up with a way that we could efficiently do that, and we still don't have an idea yet. So if any of you have an idea how we can conquer that problem, we're wide open for it.
Thank you, Randy. Counsel, you can start voting now. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much, counsel.
Thank you, Randy. Next up, counsel, we have business brought forward by city staff. We have a public hearing on ordinance number four, 2014, and Eric, would you like to visit with us about that?
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed this earlier on first reading. This is an ordinance approving a franchise for the provision of gas and electricity within the city of Alamosa by Public Service Company of Colorado, now Excel. And as we discussed earlier, the franchise that we have been operating under for the last 25 years expires, did expire this year. We've been operating under its automatic month-to-month renewal provisions since January. This will be a, I'm trying to remember, this is a 20-year franchise renewal this time, on essentially the same terms and conditions under which Public Service has been providing electricity and gas for the last 25 years. And the major feature of that is it's 3% of gross revenues is what they pay for the franchise. So unless there are any questions, I would suggest you can open it for public hearing.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Eric? If not, Eric?
I have a question. Eric, last time we had the level playing field provision, do they do that for any community anymore, or is that totally out?
That's totally out. The only way that that would be in any community's franchise agreement would be if it were carrying over like our old one was, and they just hadn't.
How long was the old agreement? How long had it been in?
25 years.
25 years, okay. That was a good agreement, I guess. Apparently, we never used it, though.
We never used it, and I don't, I don't think it's ever been used by any community to my, to my knowledge.
Thank you, counsel, and with that, we'll move to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against ordinance number four, 2014? If so, please approach the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number four, 2014, and bring it to council for a decision.
I had a question before you make a decision. Since this is Excel Energy, is there, and this talks about Public Service, is there a difference there?
The agreement is actually with Public Service. Excel Energy is, I guess you would call it the parent company for Public Service, but the franchise agreement itself, let me make sure I'm saying that correctly, yes, is with Public Service Company of Colorado. It's still an existing corporation.
So Excel falls underneath Public Service, you say?
The other way around. Public Service is a subsidiary of Excel.
I'm still confused, since Excel's the one operating here in Alamosa?
I guess I don't know, when you say Excel's the one that's operating, that may be because all of their trucks now say Excel, and Public Service is only a subsidiary company that they use for their name purposes, but if we were to go on the Secretary of State's website, we would still find Public Service Company of Colorado, a subsidiary of Excel.
And you're right, that we see nothing but Excel on all the trucks, not-
That's because, yeah, because they own Public Service.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Greg?
Yes, I don't know if this is fair, since Pat isn't here, but I believe this was the ordinance in which we were going to lay a conduit also in the trench, is that correct?
Well, it allows us to do that, so if there is trenching being done by Public Service in an area where we find it useful to lay our own conduit, we can do that. More likely than, there is trenching still going on, but a large part of what Public Service does for laying its service lines is boring, and there's a provision for allowing us to arrange with whoever their contracted company doing the boring is, to bore for us a separate bore hole, but at that same price that's being charged to Excel, if it's in a place, again, where we would find that useful.
So that wouldn't be beneficial other than the mobile costs? If we're gonna pay the same amount?
Well, that and, both mobilization and demobilization, and then presumably Excel, because it has so many projects throughout the state, it might be able to negotiate a better rate than we would if we were just doing it on our own.
Do we have any target areas that we would like to connect to?
You know, we did a lot of them when Eagle Net was putting in their infrastructure, and I don't know that we have any, without Pat here, I don't know that we have any specific ones in mind, but I do know that it's not like we want to do a large amount of this.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Counsel, if there isn't any further discussion, I'd entertain a motion. Rusty?
With that, I will move that we approve ordinance number four, 2014, an ordinance approving a franchise agreement with Public Service Company of Colorado for the non-exclusive right to make reasonable use of city streets, public utility easements, and other city property to provide gas and electric utility service to the city and its residents under the tariffs applicable to the company, to acquire, purchase, construct, install, locate, maintain, operate, upgrade, and extend into, within, and through the city all company facilities reasonably necessary for the generation, production, manufacture, sell, storage, purchase, exchange, transportation, and distribution of utility service within and throughout the city.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please start voting. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have a public hearing on ordinance number five, 2014, and ordinance providing for the designation of Blanca Vista Pond as youth fishing lake. Counsel, do we have any comments before we open? This is-
If you want, Mayor, I can provide a quick overview in Pat's absence. We wanted to thank our local chapter of the Trout Unlimited and the Colorado Department of Parks and Wildlife to partner with us on this project. They've conducted a survivability study throughout the winter to determine that trout can survive, and they will be willing to provide the catchable population of trout and monitor the activity out at the pond. So essentially, this gives us an enhancement to what our residents can do for youth fishing and can be an educational experience. At this time, I can answer any questions if the public has any.
Counsel, do we have any questions of Heather? If not, I will, I will then open-
Heather, how many, how often will this pond be stocked?
That I am not aware of. I'm not sure if they would have it, if they'd be monitoring the amount that's in there and stock it as needed, or if it's just gonna be a couple times, and if it's gone, it's gone. I'm not sure what that, but I can find that out.
And then I just have one, one concern. I would hate for all the fish to be gone for the kids, I mean, is, are there gonna be people patrolling it, so not adults, so that adults aren't fishing the pond and stuff like that?
The Department of Parks and Wildlife are so committed to this project that they've agreed to monitor the area and make sure that the rules are being followed.
And I have a concern as well. One of the concerns I had is that that area is conducive to wildlife, especially birds nesting in and around those ponds. And I am just kind of wondering, since this starts in May, most of the egg-laying and, and things like that for our geese and other birds, migratory in nature, utilize portions of the shore. And so are we gonna have specific areas that will allow fishing from a specific area, or is the entire, the entire lake or pond gonna be available for fishing?
That is additional information that I can find out from Mr. Steenberg and Sheriff Counsel.
Okay, thank you.
The Colorado Department of Parks and Wildlife does regulate birds as well as fish populations, so if they had a concern about that, I, certainly would've expressed it.
Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, it says no significant financial impact is anticipated, is there any financial impact that we know of?
Not that we know of, but it's hard to anticipate everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else?
Let's make a quick comment again, I think this is a great idea for our youth. A lot of folks like to go out towards Fort Garland or South Fork, but this is awesome. I appreciate the work of Trout Unlimited and the city in Heinz for getting on this.
Thank you, counsel, and with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number five, 2014, and ordinance designating Blanca Vista Lake as a youth fishing area. If you have a yes or nay, please approach the podium.
Daniel McCann, 1809, Sunset, Alamos, Colorado. I don't really have a yes or nay. My concern is this. When you got water, you got kids, you can have drowning. And I know trout's unlimited, they've been around a long time, but boy, you wanna watch your kids. I went to a dude ranch at the age of 10. The only time I was on a horse was when I weighed about 50 pounds, it scared the crap out of me, and I've never been on a horse since. And at that place, they had a great big lake where they divided the campers into two sections, they threw in a watermelon in the middle of it, and one section would force it to the other end, and that would, you've been through this kind of stuff, and I almost drowned. Things are busy, things are going on, and people drown. And in the town I grew up in, San Rosa, California, I helped build, I was a apprentice carpenter, and I helped build the YMCA there, and one of the directors, they took the kids out to Russian River, and it was a torrent of a river, and one day, one of the kids drowned, and he had to tell the parent, she said, "Where's Bobby, your son drowned? You gotta be careful with your kids." And when you got kids running around, they do stupid stuff, and parents, hey, watch your kids. You can always hear that from me, 'cause I'm 68, and I could've lost my daughter, she was about 17, she wrapped her car around a tree up in Colorado Springs, I've only got one, and, but from then on, she grew up, she's a special ed teacher, she's teaching kids how to behave and keep them out of prison. You lose a kid, boy, you gotta watch him, you take care. Anytime there's water around and kids, you can have trouble.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Is there anyone else to speak either for or against this ordinance? If there isn't, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number five, 2014, and bring it to council for discussion and a decision.
If there's no, if there's no further discussion or questions, I'd like, I move that we approve public hearing, ordinance number five, 2014, an ordinance providing for the designation of Blanca Vista Pond as a youth fishing lake.
Thank you.
I second it.
I've got a motion and a second. Counsel, please start voting. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel, and so now we will move on to C, which is an agreement for services with Habitat for Humanity. This is brought forward by our city manager.
I think this is something that routinely comes before council on an annual basis. The San Luis Valley Housing Coalition usually does about one year per year, one house per year, and they rely heavily on donations and volunteer grant funding. And in the past, council has approved for the city to enter into an agreement for services that would waive the building permit costs, the sewer tap assessment fee, and the water tap fee. And the breakout for this house is estimated to be $4,056. So again, this is not that the city would be paying out that amount, but we would be simply waiving those fees.
Thank you, Heather. Do we have any discussion, counsel?
I think this is a great program, and I think we should back it up 100%.
Thank you, Michael. Any other comments?
If there are no other comments, Mayor, I would like to recommend that council enter into an agreement for services with the San Luis Valley Habitat for Humanity in the amount of $4,056. This amount reflects the cost of the building permit and the sewer and water taps on their project at 1507 Edison Avenue.
I'll second it.
That a motion or a sec, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
You said you recommended-
I make a motion that we-
Okay.
Thank you Michael, any other comments?
If there are no other comments, mayor, I would like to recommend that council enter into an agreement for services with the San Luis Valley Habitat for Humanity in the amount of $4,056. This amount reflects the cost of the building permit and the sewer and water taps on their project at 1507 Edison Avenue.
I'll second that.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
You said you recommended...
I make a motion that we recommend...
Okay, thank you, I've got a motion and a second, council, please start voting. Thank you, Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you council. Next up is city manager legal, first reading on number six, 2014, I believe that, Eric?
Yes, thank you mayor. So this ordinance addresses the way in which the city ordinances are enforced in terms of sentencing that can occur for violations of the city ordinances. The city ordinances are structured such that any city ordinance which has a corresponding state criminal statute or state traffic code provision is deemed under the code of ordinances to be a criminal violation, and any other city ordinance that does not have such a corresponding state criminal or traffic code violation provision is deemed to be a civil violation. And the code treats those two differently. Under criminal violations of ordinances, jail terms can be imposed, under civil violations, they cannot. The issue that this ordinance addresses is the fact that under the Colorado statutes, cities have, under, municipal courts have the authority to impose sentences of up to one year in jail. And the city's code does not distinguish between different types of violations the way that state statutes do. So state statutes set out a schedule whereby certain violations are classified as petty offenses, one and two, misdemeanor, three, two, and one, and felonies on up. Everything is the same in the city ordinance. So if you look at city ordinance violations that have corresponding criminal violations, so criminal city ordinance violations, it's possible to be sentenced for a city violation up to a year, whereas a corresponding violation under the state statutes may be limited to six months. For instance, all petty offenses and class three misdemeanors, or at least most class three misdemeanors, are limited by state statute to a six-month sentence. So it has happened rarely that a city violation has resulted in a sentence longer than would have been possible under a state statute violation. This ordinance would clarify that any violation of a city ordinance that has a corresponding state statutory provision would be subject to the same kinds of sentencing limitations on maximum sentence that are available to the state provision. So you couldn't sentence someone to something under a city code that would be a petty offense under the state code for longer than six months. The breakpoint, if I recall correctly looking at this, the breakpoint on misdemeanors, misdemeanor three is between 50 and $300 of theft, so anything greater than a $300 theft would, under the state code, would be able to be sentenced for more than, more than, more than a year. So the breakpoint is at $300 is what this would affect, if that's clear, I stated that a little clumsily. We did run this by the city prosecutor and the city judge, the municipal judge, for their thoughts, and they both picked up on, one concern was that we don't want to be adopting state minimum sentencing. In other words, something that the state sentencing guidelines say require a minimum sentence, we don't necessarily want to have that same minimum sentence in the city code. And the ordinance is written in such a manner that it only applies to state maximums, not state minimums. Another concern is, maybe we do want to be able to sentence someone for a violation of a city ordinance to something longer than it would be possible to sentence the same violation as a state sentence. That's certainly, that's certainly a valid position, so that's really, I think, the main discussion point. If council wants to provide the municipal court with the ability to sentence beyond state sentencing ranges, we should probably come to council with a different ordinance that makes that clear, because it's not very clear the way our ordinance currently is written. It might be possible to read our ordinance to already have the kind of corresponding limitations between municipal and state.
Thank you Eric, questions, Charlie?
I had a question, is this more like of a house cleaning type of deal, or...
Well, it's both, it's, house cleaning needs to happen because I think we have a confusingly worded ordinance right now, but there is a policy decision for you to make. Do we want to structure our ordinances to correspond with state statutes or not? That's a policy decision, that's more than housekeeping.
Sure, and also, we need to also remember that if we're looking at, and I'm not against it, but if we're looking at sentencing people for longer than a year, we pick up the tab.
Whoops, I'm sorry, we can't sentence for longer than a year, that's our limit, we can sentence...
But with this, with this, we would be able to, right?
No, what this would do would be, in situations where we could sentence for up to a year, but the same violation of a state statute could only be sentenced up to six months, this would limit us, this would ratchet us down to correspond to that state sentencing provision.
Thank you Eric.
Thank you Charlie, I think it was Rusty that was next?
Couple comments on this, I really like the idea that the local judge sees these people and knows them personally, when he starts giving out sentences, and I'm not real comfortable with taking some discretionary function or power away from the judge. On a state level, if we try to match the state, you may be dealing with, they may be dealing with criminals that they don't see time and time again. So I really worry about taking that part of our judge away, and I think, I really think our judge is really fairly good at determining that, and I think he does weigh what we have to pay. So I would be more in favor of doing something on our own without taking that standard away from our own judge.
Thank you Rusty, anyone else? Ty?
I had a chance to sit in the court the other day, and I agree with Rusty, from what I was able to observe, looks like the judge did a pretty good job. But I'm wondering, by addressing this ordinance, do you think it would have an effect on deterring criminal activity in any way?
I'd turn that question over to Chief Oaks.
Chief, thank you for being here.
Good evening council, as far as deterring criminal activity, I think by leaving the discretion and the possibility of having a harsher penalty here in the city could deter the criminal activity. If they know that they're going to continue committing those crimes and not face any more than, let's say, six months, no matter how many times they've been in front of the judge, that could allow them to continue to commit the crimes. We do have a lot of repeat offenders, and as an agency, we bring them into municipal court, because right now, they do have, he has the ability to have harsher penalties. When we send him to county court, they can fall through the cracks and basically walk away. So I think by keeping the, his discretion could deter the criminal activity. You're welcome.
Thank you chief, Michael?
I agree with Chief Oaks, I think that's a really, I think the harsher the punishment, a lot of people think twice before they go out and do something, I think it's great to leave it that way.
Thank you Mike, Greg?
Yes, I like the idea of having discretion for the judge on both ends, either for a minimum sentence or up to the maximum sentence, one year, I guess, and I'd be happy with his discretion, but I don't know if we need to send this back now, or table it, or what do we need to do if we don't?
Because there is a housekeeping element to this, and we've got a confusingly written ordinance section right now, if you want to clearly keep that discretion to exceed what the state corresponding things would be, I suggest you not pass, you do a motion not to pass this on first reading and to send or direct staff to come back with a motion that would clarify that that discretion is retained by the municipal court.
I would so move then.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second on ordinance, on, yeah, the first reading on ordinance number six, 2014. Please start voting. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you council, now we'll move on to committee reports. Who has a committee report? Has anyone attended a committee report? All the, there we go, thank you.
Yes, this past Monday, I went to the Alamosa Board of Education meeting, as you all probably know, we had a work session with the school board on Eighth Street and the parking issues there. They also approved and hired Joshua Trahan as the high school athletic director and assistant principal. He comes out of Colorado Springs, so we welcome him. And also, at the high school, they are pretty much done with setting up the program with Adam State and the high school where they can have concurrent and dual enrollment classes. So this next year, juniors and seniors, and I think maybe, just juniors and seniors, I think, are going to be able to take college courses while attending high school as well. So it's a great partnership going on between both entities, thank you.
Thank you Jan, Greg?
The library board met last week, the summer reading program registration is underway, that started today. Children ages birth through six can register for the Fizz Boom Read Program. There's also, every Wednesday morning from 10:00 a.m. through, from June 4th through July 30th, the story hour for ages seven through 12, 12-year-olds, that will take place in the children's library. If you need more information, contact the Alamosa Public Library. I would also encourage everyone to visit the children's story room and view the large mural painted by Judith Boyd, who is on our library staff, it's a larger-than-life mural and very professional. Also, Pat Gilmore attended her last library board last week, Pat has put in 12 years with the library board, and I'd just like to thank her for her public service, thank you.
Thank you Greg, anyone else? Michael?
I would just like to comment, I was invited to the grand opening of the Antonito Toltec Railroad, I think it's really a neat experience, if you ever want to take that ride, and I think we should support them, because they're really doing a tremendous job to help almost every community in San Luis Valley.
Thank you Mike, I was also invited to that, but I had a previous commitment, I think we were doing something at the city level, but I can't exactly remember what it was, but anyway, thank you for representing the City of Alamosa there, Michael. Any other committee reports? If not, we'll go on to staff announcements.
Councilman Vehal mentioned the work session we attended with the school district to discuss the West Eighth Street project. I know following that, there's discussion among council on if we want to, at one of the future meetings, continue the discussion to see kind of what the next steps are and that type of thing. One recommendation I'd have is, in the meantime, just to kind of document what we were presenting to the school board, that possibly I could send a letter that just highlights the purpose of what the presentation was for, the different alternatives, and just in a way documents in case this does not move very quickly, what the city's perspective was, and you get people who change and may not have heard it, or anything like that. And so it's just a way of just documenting what's already been presented as we continue to decide what future steps we might want to do, or future discussions we may want to have. Is there any concern related to a simple letter to that effect?
I had a, mayor if I may, I had a comment, is there a way that we can go back, maybe in Don's record, find out the engineering, the engineering that we approved here, as far as the drop offs and all that?
I do think our plan is to go back and see what we can locate, but since that wasn't necessarily part of our initial presentation, that could be something for future discussions, but this letter would just simply document what the purpose of the initial presentation was.
During our conversation with the board, one of the board members brought up the fact that we did approve the engineering, and the way, what we approved, I think is different what is, what the layout is out there.
That is definitely the impression I was given.
Yeah, so I'd like to have that, you know, in case, that needs to be part of the discussion.
Thank you Charlie, Rusty?
I think it's important that we document that conversation, because it feels like there was some different directions going with how that meeting went, and we were, we were definitely just giving them alternatives, and I think it's important for our community to know that we're trying to be a good partner, and we're not pushing the school district to do anything specific, but we're giving them our opinion and our expertise on what we believe will help their problem, and we're trying to work as a good partner in that direction.
Thank you Rusty, I too would like to jump in on that, and just encourage both groups, city council and our school board, to try to work together for the safety of the children in our community, specific to dropping them off and picking them up during the school day. It's an issue that is just not going to get any better unless we take positive action, and hopefully, both groups, we can both work together for the benefit of the kids that are going to be our future. Anyway, I think it was, for the most part, it was a listening session, and we hope, or at least I hope, that the school board, if they don't like our options, would come up with options of their own, and we can try to move this project forward as soon as possible.
And I think, you know, it was very impressive that they do have the safety of the kids as a very high priority, and in evaluating everything, that seems to be the number one. And it was very good to see, as a parent, that they take that, you know, very strongly. If there's no concerns, I'll just do a simple letter, I do have a few other updates unless you want to continue discussing this item.
Well, I'll just say that I want to thank you and staff for all the work you did in that area, so go ahead.
Are we still talking on this?
I just had another comment, I'm on the senior citizens board, and we're really trying to progress and help them out. We're looking for some kind of a grant to, they need some work on their air conditioning system, stuff like that, so if anybody would have any ideas, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you Michael, Heather?
I have two other items, and then I'll open it up in case staff has any others. This is a little bit different, but we wanted to make sure that we did get this information before you and to the public as well. And I have a letter here from Dawn Honeycutt, unfortunately, they weren't able to make it tonight, and this is the last meeting before the rodeo. And so she asked that I present the gift bags that were, I believe, contained just a t-shirt or something to that effect, and to read this letter. So if you'll give me maybe five minutes, I want to let everyone get excited about the rodeo and read what she wanted to present. First of all, she wanted to apologize that she was not able to be here in person, and to thank all of you for your continued support of the Alamosa Roundup. They are currently in Cortez at another rodeo this week, and she appreciates my effort for being willing to give a quick update. Each year, they have brought the PRCA rodeo back to Alamosa in 2014.
In 2010, the crowds have grown and the notoriety has expanded. We have people from across the country planning their vacation to Alamosa around the rodeo. That would not have been possible without the financial support from the city, tourism board, and countless local businesses. Last year was a little tough with fires burning on three sides of the valley during the rodeo week. However, with the funds they had set aside, they were able to squeak by. This year, they think the rodeo looks fantastic. They've added a cowboy poetry to the ranch rodeo, a new class of cars to the demolition derby, and they are excited to be honoring 87 Colorado National Guardsmen and their families to the PRCA rodeo Friday night. She also provided to you a packet that recaps the 2013 roundup, provides the statistics, a review of the economic impact, and a schedule for this year's events. As it turns out, she knows you guys will once again be out of town for the Colorado Municipal League. They have provided tickets that can be used to enjoy the rodeo, and she has left that with the city manager's office. Again, she wants to thank you for your support and encouragement, and that it means a lot, and this event would not be possible without your support. And then, on a side comment from a staff perspective, we discussed with them, based on the, the legal advice that we've received, that their limit of what gifts can be received is up to $50. So what we will do is look at the value of those tickets, and when Michaela sends out the email, we'll note how many tickets you can receive in order to remain within that value.
Any questions or comments on the rodeo information?
Counsel?
So if, if somebody else doesn't use those tickets, you can't take them?
Usually, if there's any remaining from you, we would send it out to city staff if any of them wanted to use it, with, with similar restrictions.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Heather. Greg?
I know this is one event that council is disappointed that they miss every year, going to CML, and when I get off council, I will attend the rodeo, so I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Rusty?
Were they requesting an amount, or were they just a letter?
They were earmarked in the budget for the $5,000 on the same sponsorship line item, and so they submitted the invoice, and we did process that.
Okay, so we're, we don't need anything to move that forward?
No further action, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Are there any other staff announcements?
I do have one last one.
Thank you.
Randy Wright and I returned from Las Vegas. It was our first time attending the ICS Global Retail Convention, and it was quite an eye-opener. It had thousands of retailers, developers, financiers, and it was quite the event. We wanted to make sure everyone just kind of had an update because it took a lot of effort and resources to, to attend. At your chairs, I gave you a copy, and I have some if anyone from the public would want as well, a sample of what we did hand out to the potential retailers. It's information on the, not only just the city of Alamosa, but essentially the whole valley, because that's what we see as our market, in trying to lure them. Additionally, I left a one-sheeter piece of paper that highlights who we did make contact with. Because of the nature of the conference, the best thing is to try to set up meetings ahead of time, and we were able to do that successfully with Ross. The others, it was challenging to sometimes get a phone call back, but to also manage to fit into a schedule they already had quite full. We were still able to catch these ones at their booth. The quality of that interaction isn't as good, but we were able to make some connections. Some of them have actually been to the valley to fish or to be, visit the sand dunes. So when we had those types of connections, it was very positive. Those on the contact list that we have starred are those where we felt the interaction was, was really positive, and we anticipate continued discussions with them. There's also some people listed on this list that are not necessarily retailers, and for example, that would be Erie, Colorado, and Carlsbad, New Mexico. There are cities that actually have booths there, and we wanted to take this opportunity to pick their brain, as people who've attended the conference year after year, on what the best practices were. We took some of their materials that they've put together to try to lure retailers to their communities, and we don't want to reinvent the wheel, so we just wanted to see what, what's out there and, and what we should adopt. We also met with different vendors that can help with economic development. And as you know from our previous discussion, we're really evaluating Buxton because of the cost and what we can get out of it, and then those types of things. Something that's come to our attention as a viable alternative that we want to continue to explore is the use of ESRI, E-S-R-I. And that is actually something that's very tied into our GIS system. The city of Littleton currently uses it. So probably in the month of July, Pat, Randy, and I will be taking just a quick trip up there to see it in action and, and see it being used, and, and see if it's something that could potentially replace Buxton. The initial information we have is that it's very comparable and that it is cheaper. And since it ties into a system we're already using such as GIS, it may have additional benefits beyond that. While we were there, Randy and I were able to see some, see them play out some of the capabilities of the software, and it is, it is impressive. So it was four days for, four or five days for Randy and three or two days for myself, if you count travel. But we really did try to make the most of it, and I think we learned a lot, and we learned from watching what some of the other more experienced economic developers were doing. And we had a lot of good, good interaction. So is there any questions about the trip, or any questions about future steps?
Counsel, do we have any questions of Heather? Jan?
Do you plan on going back next year?
What we're doing, and this is one of the benefits of, of Randy having some of the conversations with some of the other communities, is there may be some other conferences that would be more targeted, cheaper, and have a better outcome for us. If we were to look at going back here, I would think we need at least six meetings set up ahead of time for it to be financially, to have a good return on investment. You need to have those meetings set up ahead of time to have the quality time to really make your case. And it was very apparent, the face-to-face we had with Ross was very positive. We could, they asked a lot of questions. We could get a lot more information in, and left with a much better feeling of making a connection. The other ones, you have thousands of people mingling around, and, and it's, you get five to 10 minutes when you catch them at the booth, so.
Thank you, Jan. Charlie?
I had one more comment. Have we had success with, with Buxton, with their, the way they, they put things together?
I, I believe we have. I think it's been used, when we did the update, I know Randy had a listing of maybe five different companies. He used it with Nestle Toll House, Beals, probably even some more. I know he's also used it, and it's on a confidential level, with some businesses that were having some difficulty. And he was able to show them maybe a little bit more about the market and targeting certain areas and some things like that.
And, and the reason I make the point is because sometimes if you try to find something cheaper, you know, if, if it's, if it's doing its job, I, I would rather stay with that product than to go to something cheaper and maybe lose the whole, the whole concept, you know? So you just need to be careful on that.
I, I agree. We really, that's why we want to make the trip up to Littleton, and I'm excited that this past year, Pat has had some time to really dig into Buxton. If it was something where it was me making the decision with my surface-level understanding of Buxton, that could be a little bit more challenging. But Pat really has spent time digging into it, so I, I anticipate when we go up to Littleton, he'll really be able to evaluate where its shortcomings might be, or where it has some improvements.
Thank you, Charlie. Heather, is this, is this agreement that we have with Buxton at this point in time, I believe, aren't we, aren't they asking for a new commitment with, with more money involved? Isn't Buxton asking for a renewal of the contract with more money involved? Or am I mistaken?
This past year, before, we renewed at the existing level. So we are currently in the middle of our current contract that's at the same level. But prior to renewing, we had a lot of discussions with them because they have a higher level that would include the visitors, the students, and, and more of the population that right now is not collected by Buxton. Right now, it's mostly the residents. And as we know, the people coming to the sand dunes, or the people, you know, having different habits greatly impact what the stores see in their sales.
So this, this trip up north is, is going to be an opportunity to answer some of the questions with relation to whether this new company you're looking at can answer those questions as well?
Yes. One of the questions we'll be flushing out with Littleton is if it can capture the visitor information or not. The increase in Buxton to go to the next level was quite substantial in order to collect the visitor information. The other issue with Buxton is that after this year, our level, our platform, will not be offered any longer. So our option will be to either do the substantial increase, which is, I believe, going from 17,000 close to 50,000, depending on what we can negotiate, that, that substantial of an increase would be our only choice if we want to continue using Buxton.
Thank you, Heather. Any other questions or comments, counsel?
My last, sorry, Mayor. My last piece, and it's something we always, every time we talk about economic development, we want to make sure we use it as an educational opportunity, in that, again, we are not just casting the net out there for any retailer that might be interested in us. We really are trying to be specific on where we're having leakage and where we're not going to cannibalize our existing businesses. We're not just approaching anyone. So when you look at this list and, and realize that there is thousands of vendors and retailers there, we didn't approach all of them because we either didn't have leakage in their categories, or we knew we were going to cannibalize some of the current existing businesses. Now, you will see there are clothing, there are some food, but there, where if you can get an anchor, it can help your local business as well. So if you have enough leakage to justify it, it won't be the cannibalization. So I didn't want to miss that opportunity. And again, I'm not sure if staff has any updates.
One more, one more comment before we go on. I'm glad you pointed that out because last time we had this discussion, we had people fired up, saying, hey, you know, you're going to bring somebody in here to compete against us, and that's wrong. And I think they just understood it incorrectly. And we need to emphasize the fact that any industry we bring in here, we hope we bring something that is not here already. And that, like you say, not somebody that's going to cannibalize what we already have. If anything, we're here to help the people that already exist and find ways how they can continue to exist.
And they've made an investment, not only in the business, but they continue to invest in our community. So it's very important to protect them.
Good point.
Charlie, Ty?
I just want to add one more comment also, because I believe leakage is very important, especially when we're talking about the millions of dollars that I believe you all presented. When you try to address the leakage issue, what happens is, is if we're able to be successful in bringing one of these companies, what happened is, is that people won't leave out of the valley to go and buy those products, and plus, just by them leaving to buy one particular, two particular items, they spend other monies outside of the community. So by addressing the leaking, leakage issue and making sure that we bring in good, solid companies, it helps all the businesses in the valley. So I'm really thankful that you all are really addressing that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ty. And I'll just close by saying that I appreciate what you and Randy have done, especially in this area. I know that it was more of a fact-finding mission than really trying to super-get somebody here, but for the most part, somebody's going to take a look at Alamosa, and they're going to do it because people like you are attending these conferences and making yourselves known and putting Alamosa on the map. So we really appreciate what you do for us in, in this arena, and I personally encourage you to continue, continue to make contacts with anyone on this list, and hopefully, one day, they'll realize the true benefit of being in Alamosa and in the valley. And so, thanks again. Any more staff announcements? Seeing none, I guess we'll move on as our local liquor licensing authority board, and we've got consent calendar B, approved special events permit application for the Alamosa County Chamber of Commerce rodeo events on June 19, 20, and 21, 2014. Counsel, do we have any comments, observations? None? Jan? Shall we just move on?
I make a motion that we approve special event permit application for Alamosa County Chamber of Commerce rodeo event on June 19, 20, 21, 2014.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second on consent calendar B. Start voting, please. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, counsel. We'll move on to counsel comment.
I got it.
Jan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank staff, Heather, Amanda Hines, Pat, Eric, Chief Oaks, and Jim for the retreat we had this past weekend. I think it was very productive. Being a first-year counselor, it was very helpful for me to see how the process works, and I truly appreciate all your hard work. Oh, I forgot, Christie. Thank you, Christie. Good.
Thank you, Jan. Anyone else? I had the privilege of attending the FAA introduction at Adam State, and FFA presented the City of Alamosa with a plaque, and I would like for counsel to join me down there, and we will present this plaque to our city manager on behalf of the FFA. This is to the City of Alamosa, thanking you for your dedication and support to the Colorado FFA Association and Foundation 2014. We had FFA members from all around Colorado, and it was the, I think they had it here about four years ago, and they plan to have it here again in four years over at, at the university. So on behalf of the FFA and counsel, I'd like to present this to Heather and the City of Alamosa. Thank you, counsel, and thank you, Heather. Thank your staff. Now we have, next on the agenda, I guess, is the executive sessions. We have two of those, so.
On these ones, Eric, can you make one motion, or you got to make two separate motions?
You can make one motion. You need to cite--
To cover all of them.
--cite the purpose for each one, and if someone wants to separate them out, doesn't like that motion, they would vote against it and move to do the two separately. But you can certainly start off by doing it together.
Let me see if I have enough breath, breath as Rusty had there in making that one motion.
Thank you, Charlie.
If any, if there's no other questions, I'll make the motion that we pursue to CRS 24-6-402 in parentheses four, in parentheses A, to discuss potential real estate acquisitions. Also CRS 24-6-402 in parentheses four, in parentheses B, to receive legal advice for, from the city attorney on condemnation issues. And also CRS 24-6-402 in parentheses four, in parentheses E, to discuss matters subjected to negotiations, development strategies for negotiations, and instruct, instruct negotiators specifically-- Specific topic to be discussed in this executive session is the Pink Elephant Project. Under second one, pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 in parentheses 4 and parentheses F to discuss personnel matters relating to city manager job performance, and pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 in parentheses 4 and parentheses B to receive legal advice from city attorney relating to legal implications of a city manager form of government as referred to in the charter.
Thank you, Charlie. Second. I have a motion and a second. Counsel, start voting.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Christie. Counsel, we will now be moving into executive session. I don't anticipate any business after executive sessions will be adjourned. So we will now move into executive session, about four or five minutes, Heather, or a couple of minutes, or shall we just move right in? We'll just move right in, into the next door, or?
Next door.
Okay. We'll move in next door into the jury room. Thank you.